Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and welcome to the February eighteenth, two thousand twenty meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton, Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. De Show.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emmick.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Mailey.
Here.
Mr. Ra Hauser.
Here.
Eight members are present.
Okay, thank you. We do not have a student board representative here tonight, so we will not have that report. So we'll move right into our presentations and celebrations. First up is Mrs. Benko and Mrs. Kroom with our preliminary budget presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to present the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year preliminary budget. So as we do each and every year, I just want to go down through a history of our financial operations. For the past five, six, seven years, we have seen a surplus in our operations due to increased collections on real estate, increased state funding, and various other reasons. Currently, in two thousand and twenty, our budgeted deficit was about one point five million dollars. Our current projected revenues at this point are sixty-five million, one oh nine sixty-nine, nine sixty-nine. Our projected expenditures as we end the year are sixty-six million, five hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty-six, leaving an annual deficit of one million, four hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. So as we began the budgeting process back in August, late August, early September, we, as administrators, and we had conversations with, with the board members on some of our budgeting objectives and goals as we move into next year. Those objectives and goals are where to evaluate and ensure proper funding is in place for our special needs students, along with students that may have some language barriers in our district. We will continue to direct resources toward our educational programs and classrooms. We wanted to allow to provide supports for our growing social emotional needs of the district and of our students. We want to continue our technology initiatives for both staff and students to truly create the twenty-first century learning environment. We want to make sure that we have proper staffing levels in place to effectively and efficiently manage, manage our facilities, whether that be custodial or, or other support staff. We continued this budgeting process of a site-based budget methodology, methodology that encourages a zero-based budgeting culture. And what that means is our building administrators are given an allocation per student to, to formulate their budgets and, but they still budget from a zero up. We don't roll forward budgets anymore, as may have been done in the past, but we start at zero and say, okay, now what do we need? It has really helped us dwindle down some of the unnecessary expenditures that may have been, or unnecessary budgeted numbers that may have been in the budgets in the past. We also will continue to manage and control fund balance levels for both our general fund and our capital reserve funds as we move through our current building projects and plan for the future.
Okay, a couple things that we're looking at the preliminary budget and that are some adjustments and additions to the budget for next year. So first, I'd like to talk a little bit about some staffing adjustments, professional and administrative staffing adjustments. First, we are looking, we did include in this new budget, an additional high school math teacher. The purpose of this is first, we are going to take our Algebra One class and we are going to make it be an entire year's course next year. We think first that is going to help with our Keystone kids and, and, and students who do struggle in math. But also, we want to make sure that students have the skills, the foundational skills they need before even going into algebra or the higher maths. So that's, that will be the focus for that high school math teacher. Additionally, we would like to add a middle school tech ed teacher. So currently, while we're bringing the sixth grade team of teachers up to the middle school, we are not bringing an additional permanent encore teacher up to the middle school. And we feel that we do need to do that. You'll remember a couple of years ago, we reduced phys ed by a teacher. We are, we are kind of remedying that next year. But this particular person, as we look at curriculum and we look at more of a project-based STEM curriculum in the encore areas, this person will work in project-based and will work with the rest of the tech ed teachers in, in a project-based, what we're calling a dream factory concept. The third one is an elementary learning support teacher. The current fifth grade has quite a large learning support population going to the sixth grade. So we do need to move two learning support teachers from the elementaries up to the middle school to support them. We feel then we can accommodate the needs at the elementary level with an additional learning support teacher. And then finally, a psychologist. So currently, the district, the district takes contracts with the IU, two point four psychologists. We want to move towards having our own psychologists. So we are recommending next year that we take one of those psychologists to be a district psychologist, and we continue to have the IU provide the one point four psychologists. And then probably we will look to you in the future to take the rest of them into the district. Under staffing adjustment support professional, we are asking for a cyber part-time instructional aide. Now, I know, Mrs. Weakland, I'm going to get my numbers wrong here. However, Mrs. Weakland had last year eight, nine full-time cyber students. This year, she is up to thirty-seven. And that takes a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of work that Mrs. Weakland is doing on the weekends and in the evening. Cyber students, as you might think, go home and are self-sufficient and do the work. Well, you'd be wrong about that. So Mrs. Weakland has to keep up with them every week, make sure they're on track, bring them into the building if we need to work with them. I will remind you that a number of those cyber students who are now with us are students that we pulled back from outside cyber schools last summer. So that, that was a cost, definitely a cost saving to the district. So we're excited about that position. We are looking for an, an additional full-time paraprofessional for additional supports in special education. We're not exactly sure where that'll be, but our numbers continue to rise, as is the trend, and we do believe we need another full-time paraprofessional. On the custodial staff, what we need to do is meet the needs of our current intermediate school moving to the high school, which is a bigger building, and the current high school moving to the new high school, which is a bigger building. So for both of those, we believe that we need two part-time additional to move the middle school staff and, and equal complement of staff that currently serves the high school. And we need two full-time custodians for the new high school. As you know, that building is larger, and we're hoping to do more with that building, so we have budgeted for that as well. And then finally, the senior computer tech. This is not a new body. This is, what we'd like to do is move a current computer tech that we already have in place to a senior computer tech position that will have, have additional responsibility. So that does add a cost to the budget.
Okay, so when we talk about salary and benefits, we are, we are, we are mandated through our contracts with our professional staff and our support staff and our administrators for various increases in the budget. So our salary increases that were budgeted as per the contract requirements, for administrators, they were three percent. For our professionals, we use estimates based on our initial planning for, for negotiations that we are currently into at this point. For support professionals, their increase for this year is about two point five, three percent on a whole basis. So above the salaries, we are taking another funding holiday from the Lincoln Benefit Trust this year. That'll get, gain us about five hundred thousand dollars with a zero percent increase in healthcare premium for employees. And what's important to note here is that because of our good claims experience, we are, we are, fund balance at the LBT has grown a bit, so we are able to pass that savings on through zero percent health insurance premiums, increases in the premium to our employees. So that, so that's a good thing for them. And we'll talk about, more about premium share after negotiations and see where, where those numbers land moving forward. Also, just a reminder of our PERS rate increases. So this year, as the increases start to level out, our employer contribution rates increased point six four percent. And you'll see there, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, our rate was thirty-four point two nine percent. And our certified twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one PERS employer contribution rate is thirty-four point five one percent. Now, not, not only do we have the increase in the PERS rate, but that's also compounded on top of salary increases. So as you're doing those three, three percent salary increases, you get, you increase your PERS contribution moving forward also. So I'm going to let Mrs. Kroom talk about some of the other preliminary budget components.
So we've also included cameras for the lower level of the middle school covering the athletic areas and storage rooms. This is something we've wanted to do for a while, and we think now, moving the middle school students over there, it's, it, this is the right time to do it. And we, there, we have a lot of areas that are not covered in the storage rooms, and we feel that they need to be covered. We currently have a, our own athletic trainer, well, we are in the budget, we want to contract a second athletic trainer for additional support. Again, we are adding additional fields and additional buildings, and our athletic trainer, trainer is really being stretched. So we think that's a really important step. We are looking to replace computer equipment for the CTE labs. This, it's time for them. High school business lab, high school auto CAD lab, middle school computer science lab, and middle school graphic arts design lab. So each one of them, it was, it was time for them to have their computer equipment replaced. Again, replacement equipment for Promethean boards at both the middle and elementary. This isn't all of them. I think we said this was about ten of them at each of those buildings, and they are larger Promethean boards. And then finally, approximately a hundred thousand dollars for band uniform replacement, which is the cost of those because they, you don't do it very often, and they are quite expensive for what they, for what they are. So we are also putting in the budget for band uniform replacement for next year.
Okay, so our preliminary budget overview for the two thousand twenty-one school year, our projected opening fund balance as of July first, two thousand twenty, is set right now at eighteen million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty. Our budgeted revenues are fifty, sixty-five million, two seventy-one, nine ten, which gives us the available, available resources of eighty-three million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Our expenditures are budgeted at sixty-seven million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, giving us a projected ending general fund balance at six thirty twenty-one of fifteen, almost fifteen point six million dollars. The, between our revenues and expenditures, that leaves us with a budget deficit next year of two point four million dollars. Please note that this, this information that is presented to you is for the preliminary budget only over the next month. We will be refining it as new information may become available to us, particularly in the area of revenue estimates. We don't, we don't have solid numbers yet for what our revenues are to be for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, especially on, especially on the special ed side. Those numbers don't come in till a little bit later. And then also, we don't have a state budget. So with the state budget, the state is going to give us for two thousand twenty-one is still up in the air. So currently, we have budgeted at the nineteen, twenty funding levels that we are estimating, maybe with a little bit more looking at our trends, too. I think we put, we put a little bit more money in for that.
Questions? May I interject a question?
Yes.
Here. Retaining to the fund balance, the projected fund balance at the beginning, the projected opening, does that take into consideration that one point four million dollar deficit that is in the current year?
Yes.
It does?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Okay. So another one of our budgeting goals, again, was to make sure that, you know, we're trying to manage and control our fund balance levels. Therefore, we will use some of the general fund balance for offsetting some of our two thousand twenty-one expenditures. This slide here is our fund balance designations at the end of two thousand and nineteen. So these are actual numbers. In our non-spendable, we had about five point six million dollars, which mainly consists of our balance at the Lincoln Benefit Trust as we pay our claims and, for medical expenses. And that also includes some prepaid expenses for the following year. We did not have anything in general fund restricted. However, in committed, we have, we had five point two million dollars in our retirement commitments, which will assist in covering some of the one point five million dollar deficit in the nineteen twenty budget. We had also committed technology of five hundred thousand dollars and medical costs for nine hundred and seven thousand dollars. All those will be assisting us moving forward as, as we need to cover our deficits. In our debt principal line item, we have had three point two million dollars, which some of that will be used to offset the one point four million dollar deficit in the nineteen twenty budget to cover some of our debt payments. And then finally, an assigned fund balance of four point one million dollars. That was approximately six point five five percent of our total budgeted expenditures for the eighteen nineteen school year. It is required to be eight percent or less. So that gave us a total general fund, fund balance at the end of six thirty nineteen of nineteen million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred. So as we move into the nineteen twenty year, you'll see down at the bottom here, our total general fund ending balance, as we discussed, the eighteen million, two eighty-two, that's taking that into consideration, that one and a half million dollar deficit. Our fund balances remain pretty much level. We will be using, as I said, some of it for debt principal. We'll be talking about using some of the retirement also. Six thirty twenty-one, what is in our budget right now. And as I had noted in our prior slide, the ending general fund balance as projected with the two point four million dollar deficit is projected to be fifteen point eight million dollars. And in that two point four million dollar deficit, we are planning on taking a funding holiday at the LBT again, once again, in two thousand twenty-one. Five hundred thousand dollars. We will utilize retirement monies that were committed when we were having the spike in PERS rates back a few years ago. And I'll go into those PERS rates here in a few minutes. We will use up our technology reserves of five hundred thousand dollars as we talk about the replacement of some of those labs and the Promethean boards for, for all levels, actually. Our medical costs will be committed about five hundred and seven thousand dollars, which equals out to almost a month's worth of medical premiums. Our debt principal, we'll use about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that to offset the deficit. And then our unassigned balance will go up to four, four million, five sixty, six sixty-nine, which is approximately six point seven two percent of total expenditures. And that will start to increase a little bit more towards that eight percent that is required of us. So this is our general fund, fund balance history. As you can see, in two thousand and sixteen, we used some of our fund balance and, and moved those funds over to our capital, capital reserve fund, so we will be able to offset some of our debt payments with the new projects coming up. And we did that actually for a couple of years in a row. At the first, two thousand and sixteen, you see a big drop because we moved about four million dollars over to that fund because we received back payment for some of our plan con funds that were due to us, our reimbursement for older, older projects that we weren't getting for a while. So we moved those funds, I think in two thousand and seventeen, we moved, I think, two million dollars over, and then in two thousand and eighteen, we moved one million dollars over. So that helps fund some of the seven million dollars that we said we were going to put in cash towards the new high school and the middle school project. This is our fund balance history for the capital reserve fund. As you can see here, in two thousand and fifteen, starting in two thousand sixteen, is where it starts to spike up a little bit as we move those funds over. And then as we move into two thousand twenty-one, that'll start to come back down as we use some of those funds again to fund our projects. This slide just gives you a history of the PERS employer contribution rates. You can see back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, our employer contribution rate was four point seven eight percent of salaries. And now in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, the certified rate was thirty-four point five one percent. So it's great that we have, we have set aside some funds reserved to cover those expenditures that we have, that remain to, that keep growing as we move forward. That rate right now is projected by the state to get up to thirty-six point six percent in two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. And this slide just shows that it's starting to level off from where we've come, come from down here. So I, I, I know that you are all aware of the pension politics that are, that are in Harrisburg right now, and hopefully some of the new changes that are coming about for the new plans will help, help level this expenditure out. So proposed considerations for the two thousand twenty-one budget. This preliminary budget that I'm going to be presenting for your approval will be, it includes a one point one nine percent tax increase of point two seven mils. These, these mils are being put in place to phase in the millage to assist the funding of our capital projects while utilizing reserved funds, which were set aside for this process. If you remember back in the planning stages of the project, we had said there probably that, that we would be planning for a point two seven mil rate increase every year, and so far we've been able to do that. So with a two point four million dollar deficit, I feel it necessary to communicate to the board that our additional property tax revenue options are as shown on this slide. So currently in the preliminary budget, we do have the point two seven millage rate increase of, it's a one point one nine percent increase. That gives us three hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars revenue. And the average dollar increase for the taxpayers is about thirty-three dollars for the year. Our Act One index, our adjusted Act One index, was set at three point six percent this year by the state, which would give us two, twenty-three point four five eight mils, and it would be additional revenue of one million dollars. The average cost on the taxpayer would be about ninety-eight dollars for the tax bill. And you can see the levels in there for other rate increases. So as, as we go through this presentation, and you listen, and you review your budget packets that I have given you, we will be sending a survey out to the board members to look at some of these tax increases and get your thoughts on maybe if there is a level that you wanted, or if there is a zero increase, and you guys can communicate it to us via the survey. This is a look back on our tax millage rates. This is actually a five-year look back. So if you'll see back here, in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, we actually had three years where we, where the board so graciously did not raise any taxes. So we had a zero percent tax increase for these three years. This is the first year here, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, of the tax increase for the project and also a little bit to fund some general fund expenditures. And then this nineteen twenty year, we did the point two seven increase. It was a one point two one percent increase at that point. So this is where we would be. We would stay, if no one else touched their tax rates here in York County, we would stay with, with the point two seven increase, we would stay level of where we were in, in comparison to the county. And if we raised to the index, we would probably be somewhere around the middle. And that's, that would be if no other York County districts raised their income taxes also. So here is our slide again, just showing the budget deficit. And again, I just, just a reminder that these numbers are preliminary. And so what are our next steps with the budget? We going to be, like I said, asking for input through the survey as to the board's direction for the elements presented in the preliminary budget. The final preliminary budget will be voted on Thursday's planning meeting to release for public inspection. And what that's going to do for us is give us the opportunity to approve the final budget in March. And at that point, we will be able to start our recruiting processes for some of our open positions that we presented tonight, and also some retirements. We have felt in the past couple of years, we have really struggled to hire some, to hire qualified candidates for open positions. So that'll give us a leg up on being able to really recruit for those positions. And then throughout February and March, the business office will be continuing to review and monitor any changes that we see come down the road through estimates and things like that, and then final adoption in March. Any questions or comments? Sorry, that was a long presentation.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Just wondering if you could give us a little bit of a rationale for moving the psychologist from IU to a district employee?
First, we think we can save money.
level that you wanted, or if there is a zero increase, and you guys can communicate it to us via the survey. This is a look back on our tax millage rates. This is actually a five-year look back. So if you'll see back here, in 2015, 16, we actually had three years where we, where the board so graciously did not raise any taxes. So we had a 0% tax increase for these three years. This is the first year here, 2018, 19, of the tax increase for the project, and also a little bit to fund some general fund expenditures. And then, this 19, 20 year, we did the .27 increase. It was a 1.21% increase at that point. So this is where we would be. We would stay, if no one else touched their tax rates here in York County, we would stay, with, with the .27 increase, we would stay level of where we were in comparison to the county. And if we raised to the index, we would probably be somewhere around the middle. And that's, that would be if no other York County districts raised their income taxes So here is our slide, again, just showing the budget deficit. And again, I just, just a reminder that these numbers are preliminary. And so what are our next steps with the budget? We going to be, like I said, asking for input through the survey as to the board's direction for the elements presented in the preliminary budget. The final preliminary budget will be voted on Thursday's planning meeting to release for public inspection. And what that's going to do for us is give us the opportunity to approve the final budget in March. And at that point, we will be able to start our recruiting processes for some of our open positions that we presented tonight, and also some retirements. We have felt, in the past couple of years, we have really struggled to hire some, to hire qualified candidates for open positions. So that'll give us a leg up on being able to really recruit for those positions. And then, throughout February and March, the business office will be continuing to review and monitor any changes that we see come down the road through estimates and things like that, and then final adoption in March. Any questions or comments? Sorry, that was a long presentation.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Just wondering if you could give us a little bit of a rationale for moving the psychologist from IU to a district employee?
First, we think we can save money. Well, we know we can save money by moving them to our employee. We're one of the few districts that does still contract through the IU, their psychologists, and we just think having them be our employees, we, we can just use them in other ways as well. But we can save money. We know we can save money.
Good rationale.
Yeah, there you go.
Anybody else?
Word is to show we're taking the money out for the renovation.
That money is coming from the capital, capital reserve fund.
And when it doesn't show no decrease, or how it's...
That's because the capital reserve fund is separate from the general fund budget.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Benko. I know that takes a lot of hard work to get to this point, so I appreciate all of your efforts with this. Okay, we'll move on to our next presentation. This is our branding guide presentation with Mr. Perkins.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
And we're waiting for the presentation to come up. I'll give the presentation, then we'll look at the pretty pictures. So the reason we're giving a quick presentation tonight is you're going to be asked on Thursday, as a board, to vote for the branding guide, to adopt the branding guide. If you recall, back in October, sat here and we went through and talked about the different logos, talked about the processes that we had gone through to get to where we were, to be able to sit down with Johnsons and develop those logos, from meeting with staff and students, surveying the community, having a lot of meetings, a plethora, if you will, of meetings with staff and high school students, and middle school students, and everybody. Well, the reason we're asking you guys to vote on it, do we have to? No. However, it's really good, as a community of the board, the administration, the staff, the students, to be able to go, here's who we are. And so it shows that we're a united front. So, this is Benko. That's kind of what we went through. Again, held all kinds of meetings. All the graphs, graphics that are part of the style guides are ones that organized, organizations can select from. And this was all we talked about on October 17th of 2018. If you recall, these are just our different logo options that are available. And we had talked at that presentation as well, the actual style guide goes in and it shows where our approved backgrounds are, what the official colors of the district are. So we can get away from the debate of, is it black and white? Is it red and gray? Is it, what is it? And it gives all the pantone colors and all the official, here's what it is. Also gives the approved typography. Now, one of the questions that came out of the last board meeting that I was asked was, what does that mean, all of our emails need to be typed in that font? Do our, all of our documents? No. If we're going to write Dover area school district, and we're going to write something official, then we were going to want to look to those fonts, and that's what we're going to want to use. The application, environmental applications are just samples of ways that we can look at using the logos in different areas of our new high school. So that's what's all going, you're going to see in the actual style guide. One of the things that I've been able to do is work with Mr. Smith at the high school. One of the questions that also came out, especially from the athletics department, was, you know, this is great. We love that we're having the new logos, all this kind of stuff, but there's 50 gazillion colors. And so we want to go print the $10, $15 t-shirt for, whether it be like a workout shirt or whatever, that's going to cost us a lot of money. Now, our $15, $10 shirts is going to be a lot more, just because of the number of colors that are in each of the graphics. So I've been working with Mr. Smith to come up with renditions of each of the multicolor graphics, if you will, and boil it down to one or two graphics, or one or two color graphics to help save on cost for printing for the different organizations. This is just a sample of where we took one of the graphics up top, and then just maintained it using one or two colors through. Again, following our style guide and everything else, and that will help, again, cut down on cost for everybody. So where do we go from here? Well, excitingly, Thursday night, Dr. Leesling and myself are going to present a timeline, just an overview of, here's where we're headed next. And then hopefully, we can get the style guide voted on Thursday night. Then we're going to go into the implementation rollout, and next year, look at registering for trademark.
One of the things that they're going to present on Thursday night for you is to see the athletic, the athletic uniform review cycle. So you can see where we are in that, because I think a number of you have asked about that. So you can see where we are as we convert over to the new colors and the new, not new colors, but all the new style guide.
Any questions, concerns?
Will the new color guide affect the band uniforms?
Honestly, it should be everything ordered moving forward.
Will that approve before we pay the hundred thousand?
Oh, yeah, because you're going to approve them on Thursday. Yep.
So then therefore, the colors are set.
Yep.
I got one question.
Yeah.
And this may not exactly pertain to this, but one of the things I've always wanted, and you've traveled around the different areas, especially over in the Lancaster area, it seems like the community really, you know, that they, they buy into the mascot or whatever of that district. Are we looking at trying to implement that in our district to get some community involvement to try and move that far? Or is that, are we not there yet?
Oh, as part of our presentation on Thursday night, come back and you'll see. Yeah, we have some, we have some ideas of some things that we're going to be looking at. Not to get too much into the weeds, but we are looking at being able to have like a fan store where you can go on and order whatever you want, using the approved logos and everything. We have some ideas for even this year, rolling out some stuff, but really getting the ball rolling for next year that will feed right into that.
Awesome.
Anybody else?
Thank you all very much.
Okay, moving on in our agenda, we are now at our first public comment period. This is for items on or off of tonight's agenda. If you have anything you would like to comment on, you should come to those microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Moving on to board president's communication, we did earlier this evening have our hearing that is required by the state for the closure of the intermediate school. And then immediately following that, we had an executive session to talk about personnel matters that are on tonight's agenda. So we will now move on to our policy committee summary. Mrs. Krim.
Okay. Lost my agenda here. Give me a second here. Still in the executive session. Okay. We have been extremely busy in our policy committee. And I wanted to take a little bit of time tonight to talk to you about some of the policies because a few of the policies are going to come into play this summer and will affect students and families. And I thought it was important that I gave you a heads up. First, one of the policies we're looking very closely at is policy 204 attendance. One of the things when we have our future ready index is attendance at all the buildings is something that we receive points on. And I think I shared with you when we did the future ready index that we are not doing the best we can with our attendance, and think that some of our policies might, might be, might be a problem. So we are bringing to the curriculum board meeting committee on Thursday night, policy revisions to the attendance, and probably the two biggest things you will see there is, first, the state, as of the summer, is changing the compulsory attendance age. It will go down to six and eight, and at lowest six and as high as 18. Currently, it is eight and 17. So that's going to be a very big change that needs to go into place. And then the second one is the surf passes. So surf passes are what parents fill out to take their students on vacation or out of school during the school year. And right now, parents are allowed to take their students out for 10 days. We are recommending that we change that to five. We think that with, you know, with our curriculum, that that best serves the students, and that we feel that five days is enough for parents to take students out. The second policy, 215.1 acceleration, the major change here was that, in the past, we have dual enrollment for students at the high school level. And in the past, in the, in the current policy, it says that, I want to read this to you, that if the course is taught by an educator outside of the district, such as college or university, the student will receive elective credit. We've never done that. So the policy is not reflective of what we've ever done. So we are changing the policy to say that it will not, they will not receive elective credit towards graduation, and it will be not be factored into the GPA. So we thought we needed, the policy needed to reflect what we actually do. Policy number 220, expression, distribution, and posting of materials. This is a policy that PSBA sent to us recently and said we needed to change immediately. The very first paragraph in this new policy, most of the policy is the same, but the very first policy, the paragraph, really talks about the constitutional rights of students. Then there needed to be a statement there, so this policy does reflect that. The next two policies, 222 and 237, are important because they are directly affecting our students. Tobacco and vaping products, as you know, and as you saw on TV, everyone is dealing with the vaping products, and our policies are not reflecting what we need to be doing. So we would like to, we need to adapt the tobacco and vaping policy for ourselves, but as well as the law is changing. So that our policy here absolutely reflects the new law that is, that's coming out. And the next one is electronic devices. So this is an interesting one as well. And I think this is one that needs to be looked at often. We are beginning to have interesting situations where an Apple Watch, which is an electronic device, are showing up in classrooms, which is okay, but they are not allowed during PSSAs or keystones. So we need some policies to govern their use in the classroom and how we monitor that as well. Non-school organizations, groups, individuals, policy 913 goes along up top with policy 220. They from PSBA came at the same time. Our non-school organizations, groups, or individuals is pretty much a policy that deals only with groups that have nothing to do with the district. And so they are separating out 913 from 222. So that also comes out, and we are taking PSBA's policy on that. Our next policy committee meeting on March 10th, we are going to go back to electronic devices. We are going to go back to non-school organizations, groups, and individuals. And we also need to look at withdrawal from school. So again, you have a couple of policies coming up for approval tonight that the policy committee has been working on, but I would say we've been really busy looking at our policies and making sure they truly align with what we want to be doing in the classroom, in the buildings, and are legal based. So any question on the policies?
The surf passes, the, your recommendation going from 10 to five days, does PSBA have a...
No, what we did, no, what we did is we surveyed all our local, local school districts. A number of them went to five years ago, when more accountability came into the buildings for assessments and, and coming to school. So we kind of lagged behind that. But no, PSBA does not have recommendation for that.
Do we know, like, what our general timeframe is? Like, is that going to affect a lot of people, or is that something that's rarely...
Oh, putting it into place?
Yeah.
We are going to put it, what we want to do is, once it's approved, which hopefully will be in a month or two, we will advertise it very heavily before we ever get into the summer. So it shouldn't affect too many people because they'll know about it.
Any other questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll move on to the approval of our minutes. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 7th, 2020 board meeting.
Don't move.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? The motion carries. Okay, now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 2020 board planning meeting.
Don't move.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Mrs. Krim, would you like to walk down through any outstanding items here that you think we should be clear on?
Sure, yeah, I'd like to point out policy 817, the Auditor General Performance Audit Corrective Action Plan. Last month, we are, our general audit this summer, we had three findings, and we had to provide PDE with a corrective action plan. We did that, and we presented that to the board during executive session last month, and we are submitting that to PDE this week. There are a number of agreements for students that, a couple of them are moving into the district with services and placements that we are keeping them in. And so you will see a few agreements in which we are sending students to outside placements. The YAA budget is up on here. I'd like to just comment, that's a $100 increase in tuition next year. However, we are going from 18 down to 16 slots next year. And again, I just want to, want to tell you how valuable this is for our students. It's tremendous, and the kids are so successful here, so we're really pleased with that. And then finally, the LIU general operations budget is up for your approval. Again, this is the general operations budget, nothing to do with special education, it's just the operation of the LIU.
And just for clarification, York Adams and LIU budgets are separate votes.
Yes, they are separate votes.
They're not part of the consent agenda. Mr. Nelson, just for the public's information, could you touch on the MPDES agreement and how that relates to partnerships within the community?
As anybody who's been to the new construction site knows, we have to take about six to eight feet of fill out of there, pretty much from where the new high school is up, just about to Intermediate Avenue. So most of that fill was going to have to be hauled over to North Salem or find another location for it. So the developer that's looking to develop Dover Town Apartments and whatever their townhouses, they were approached, our excavation contractor, and asked if they could use that for their site. So in conjunction with that, putting our waste or overburden back there will eliminate travel in the roads to get from Intermediate School to North Salem, which will take a lot of wear and tear off the roads, and save a lot of time to get it there. The reason for the NPDES permit is Dover Town is probably 12 to 18 months away from getting their NPDES permit. So without that, you can't stockpile material, you can't move material, you can't do anything. So they worked out some sort of deal with York Excavation to get permission from York County Conservation to stockpile our waste material back there. Once it leaves our property, it's not our responsibility at that point. We have no liability or responsibility in maintaining the stockpile or getting it there. That's all, that all falls on, onto York Ex and Dover Town. But because they couldn't get their NPDES permit, York County Conservation said that we could, they would recommend we amend our permit to allow our stuff to go back there. So it's, it's, it's a win-win. Going to save some time at the end, and going to keep running from so much running on the road, so.
Thank you. Okay, just wanted to note, as part of the consent agenda, we do have five retirements that have been announced for them of teachers who will be retiring at the end of the year. And then we have a building aide who will be retiring at the end of this month. Combined, they have 118 years of service to the district, so we thank all of them for their time with us, and we will certainly miss all of them. Hopefully, they'll come back for a nice little dinner at the end of the year to celebrate. And we also have some appointments, and I understand that our new food service director, if we make it official, is here with us tonight. That would be Kelly Van Hard. Did you just want to stand up so everybody can see who you are and welcome you? We'll welcome you officially in a minute. Anybody else have any other questions or discussions on the consent agenda tonight?
We also have three teachers that are up for tenure, so congratulations to them. And I just wanted to mention regarding the retirees, reading, in reading the letters, you know, as they submitted their retirement, you know, you always hope for, you know, when you get to that point where you can retire, that you can enjoy it and make that decision on your own terms. Unfortunately, you know, sometimes other things get in the way, and health issues come up, and, and our hearts go out to those, you know, who, who've been battling health issues and are making these decisions based on that. So from the board, you know, just want to say, you know, thank you for your service, for your endurance, and for all of them, you know, 118 years. We're very blessed to have long, longstanding employees here like that. So just wanted to make that comment, that we just wish everyone well.
Anybody else? Okay, we had a motion and a second, so Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. Okay, now we'll move on to our unity council report. Mrs. Maile.
Okay, so I think we had a productive meeting. We got a lot done in a short period of time. We had a presentation, remind me, was it Dover Elementary?
It was Live.
Live Elementary, sorry. Live Elementary came and did a presentation on unity activities that they've been doing in their school, and then we broke into, I guess, two large groups to work on a vision statement for the unity council and a mission statement. And is that okay to read them, or good? Okay. So the vision statement for the unity council is break the cycle, equity for all, and the mission statement is through diligent and continued staff training, community outreach, and student activities, the unity council will advocate for others by promoting understanding of the value of each individual for the purpose of building community. So we, you know, had a really great discussion, gathered some good ideas, and I think it was a successful night.
Thank you. Questions for Mrs. Maile? Okay. Moving on to the Dover Eagle Foundation, the foundation does have their first major fundraiser coming up, March 15th, 2020. It's a Sunday at 12:00 PM at the Dover Township Community Center, so hopefully you can all stop by, and Mrs. Benko loves to take money from people, so she would be happy to sell you tickets to the bingo event, where you can win lots of cash and gift cards. So mark your calendars for that, and we'll have hopefully great results to report at next month's board meeting, so.
Can I also report on that, too?
Yes, you may.
As you may be aware, around York County, they have a, an event called, a one-day event called Give Local York. The Dover Eagle Foundation has been registered for Give Local York, and we are in the process of formulating the goals and objectives in the, in that, so be on the lookout for information for that, so we can help our students and our staff get scholarships and grants.
And I'd like to add, the Dover Eagle Foundation is giving out their first student scholarships this year, so please come out and support and help them raise money, because all of the money they're raising does go back to students and the teachers in the district. So it's a great organization.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on now to the York Adams Academy. Mr. Emig.
Our last meeting was Tuesday, January 28th. Due to our prior commitment, I couldn't make it there, however, as Mrs. Kroom had stated, the budget was passed by York Adams Academy and forward to Teach School District, and as she had stated, it was a hundred dollar increase per seat. But as of the last meeting, we have seven students enrolled, and we still have 11 open seats, because as of right now, Dover still has 18 seats. So I have one that one.
Okay, questions for Mr. Emig? Okay, as we mentioned earlier, we do have a vote on that budget tonight, so at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 York Adams Academy General Operating Budget.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Mrs. Benko. Moving on to the York County School of Technology, Mr. DeLauder.
Just want to give a brief, excuse me, update on the, the building project at the School of Technology. They did break ground, and they are well on their way. But as you can imagine, with the wet winter we've been having, and the fact that the ground hasn't frozen much for them, they did have to do a little bit of revamping of their, their construction schedule, but they are reporting that they are on schedule, and most importantly, they are on budget as well with that. So that's going well. And as far as the, the JOC is concerned, I wasn't able to make that meeting, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Emig, who went in my place to find out what happened at that meeting.
That meeting took place on Monday, January the 23rd, and actually, that meeting consisted of honoring the school board directors with a dinner at York County School of Technology, prepared by all the students at York Tech that are in the culinary department. The meal is good. I attend every year, and, and then after the media, meal, we go downstairs and have the meeting. And just a couple things, as, they have a career camp, and currently, they have 186 applicants. They have a Hot Riders of Tomorrow Club, and that's going to take place on April the 4th at York Tech. Their Spring Play Musical is going to be Bring It On, and that's going to be held April 3rd, 4th, and 5th. They did honor six students of the month, and as Mr. DeLauder said, at capital improvements, all the walls are up for the, and they are on schedule. As far as Lincoln Benefit Trust, they're expecting a 13 to 14 percent increase for 2021. Two percent of that goes to the tech budget, and they made a comment that they would wish that all the school districts would communicate with York Tech. So other than that, that's all that I had from that meeting.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Emig or Mr. DeLauder?
Oh, well, just one more thing. Their number of applications by January 2020, they have the highest number in six years. Currently, they have 864.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to LIU and Special Education, Mrs. Kroom and Mrs. Benko.
The only thing really to report is that we're working through their fair share agreement, which is our agreement with the LIU on business rules and how we request services and how we budget for next year with them. So it is our first year in this new fair share agreement, and I think it's going pretty well. They're very open to our suggestions and have been, seem to have been very responsive to that. Other than that, that's pretty much everything but the LIU budget tonight.
And speaking of, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 Lincoln Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget.
No move.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Benko? Okay, moving on to legislative and York Learning Center with Mr. Rahauer.
The only thing I can report on legislation is that the governor gave his budget report, and now the House and Senate can argue over it for the next couple of months, is who gets what, or who gets shipped, or a lot of things discussed. They said they need to have it done by the 30th of June. And the other report is, we meet next month at York Learning Center.
Any questions for Mr. Rahauer? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Brenton is not here tonight to discuss PSBA. Mrs. Kroom, did you have anything from PSBA to share?
No.
Okay. Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman.
No report.
Superintendent's report, Mrs. Kroom.
First, I'd like to thank Live for their beautiful artwork on the wall, except they're not getting the memo of the weather, so just saying, okay? If this is the best we get with snow, that, that's awesome, I'll take it. I'd like to say that sickness in our schools is waning, waning, but every time I feel like I do, someone else goes home sick. So we're getting there. A week ago, Dave had his crew in every single building wiping down everything, from the doorknobs to the desks to the bathrooms, to just try and get a handle of it. We are, we are getting a handle of it, but now the stomach virus seems to be really around. So being done with February, I'd like to just point out some things in March. Next month, we are going to recognize a number of our music students and our athletic students at the board who have made it past, we'll say postseason, even music, they go past postseason. So we're going to bring them in, to recognize them. We're very excited. March is an exciting month. We have our spring musical, spring sports starts, and music in our schools concert. So that's exciting. And then just a reminder for all of you that April 28th is the YCal Board Dinner. So mark your calendars as soon as we get the information directly, but I wanted to let you know what the date is, March or April 28th.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Kroom? Okay, at this point, I'll take any other miscellaneous comments or observations from our board members tonight. Hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. Again, if you have anything to comment on, please state your name and address for the record at the microphones.
Scott Miller, 970 North Circle Drive. I have two boys in Dover School District. A question on the adding the new AD. Do we add any extra sports to the district to quantify adding another athletic trainer? We said we brought fields in, but if we're going to hire, as a taxpayer, if we're hiring another athletic trainer, what has changed to require us to spend more money?
Our athletic trainer now, we are really struggling, because he cannot get, spring especially, to all of our athletic events, during practice and to the events. So one person, if we have a track meet going on a soccer game, all of the spring sports, we do not have an athletic trainer at every event, and should someone get hurt, he has to travel there. And now, we have added, we, for, for this year, we have more fields out at Weiglestown, we have more fields out at Live this year, and we are going to continue, we are putting more fields at the new high school, we're keeping the old high school fields. We are, we are struggling now, and when we looked at York County, we were very woefully understacked as compared to other, other school districts.
And in addition to that also, last year's budget included a stipend for one of our staff members to help out for athletic training, and also, within the past few years, we did add lacrosse. So I think that, it, it's just a rolling circle.
Yeah.
Okay. Did we hire a new athletic director?
Yes, tonight.
We did.
Yes.
And that person, I didn't, I didn't see it in the meeting.
That person is Dr. Troy Weasley.
Okay. Hello, I think I met him years ago when my son Evan went to Live.
Yeah.
Okay. Does he have experience as an athletic director?
Yes, he has eight years' experience as an assistant athletic director.
When was that?
Couple years ago, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the 90s? Okay. Because my, both my boys are athletic, they're looking to go division, play collegiate sports, and I don't know if, if that is, if we couldn't have found somebody with more experience to come in and run our, and run our sports programs.
We received a number of applicants, and I can tell you, very, very few with athletic director experience.
Coaching experience?
Some, a few, a couple candidates, but coaching experience doesn't necessarily transfer to athletic, to athletic director experience.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody else? Okay, with that, our future meeting announcements, we do have this Thursday, our board committee meetings beginning at 6:00 PM, and our board planning meeting at 7:00, and then on Tuesday, March 17th, we have our 7:00 PM regular board meeting. So if there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye? Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming, everybody.